Mr. President of the Troy Planning Commission, copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the planning commission. The roles and responsibilities of the planning commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wardman Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on a sign-on sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones or any other devices that might disrupt this meeting please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. The roll call, Ms. Sarniky, please.
Mr. Apedian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Mr. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Coram President, item number two, approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Motion by Mr. Faison and second by Mr. Prent. Roll call, Ms. Sarniky, please.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Apedian?
Yes.
Item number three, approval of the minutes for the October 23rd, 2018 meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes, please? Motion by Mr. Sanzika and second by Ms. Cruz. Roll call, Ms. Sarniky, please.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Prent?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Item number four, public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we move to item number five, preliminary site plan review, file number SUJPLM 2018-0023, proposed Dequinder retail, south of East Square Lake, west of Dequinder. Parcel identification number 88-20-12-200-027, section 12, currently zone N, neighborhood node N district. Mr. Carlyle.
One second, pull up the presentation right now. All right. Up.
Right there.
Yep. Thank you and good evening. Application tonight is for a approximately 7,000 square foot strip retail tenant building located south of the southwest corner of East Square Lake and Dequinder Road. You'll note that the parcel is highlighted in yellow, it's vacant, it's same ownership that owns the parcel, it's only just to the north. As noted, the applicant is proposing a 7,200 square foot, six unit building. This is a building outlined in red. There will be a new curb cut proposed just north of the building to be shared with the development department. The applicant also owns, locate here, there'll be shared access, cross access at this location, and there's an existing curb cut on Dequinder that will be removed. So in essence, there'll be two curb cuts now on Dequinder, this one will remain, this one will be gone, and then a new one will be located to serve both this development as well as this development. Parking is all located behind the building and the building fronts according to the neighborhood node district requirements. The building itself meets all the setback and height requirements, the development meets all the required landscaping requirements. We do note that there are a discrepancy in the photometrics, it exceeds the lawful photometric along Dequinder, and the applicant has been informed that that will have to be reduced with some of the final site plan. I'm going to quickly run through the elevations. The front elevation is shown here, includes a mix of variations in the front edge, and it does meet the transparency requirement along the front elevation. The rear elevation, this will face the parking lot, again, they do meet the requirement for transparency on the ground floor, and these are the proposed side elevations. This last picture shows the site is located approximately in this location, it'll be in this location, this is the existing retail building owned again by the same owner. It's my understanding that they attempted to maps the architecture, or at least be somewhat compatible with the new building with the existing building, and again, the cross axis will be located in this approximate location with the curb cut approximately in this location. So I always want to show this for comparisons of the existing building to what they're proposing. We are recommending plumber site plan approval with the conditions that the applicant either combine the parcels or provide a cross axis easement to the property itself, as well as they reduce the footcandle methods along Dequinder. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Carlyle at this point?
Just one quick one. You said that the owner's looking into updating the look, does he all want to match the new?
No. What I meant to say, and if I didn't say very clearly, is my understanding is the building they're proposing is trying to somewhat match the architecture of this building with a little more detail to it. They're here to answer any questions on that.
Yeah, good, thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlyle at this point? Does a cross access have to be made if it's the same owner, or just for, I don't mean a cross access agreement?
If it's the same owner, if it's two parcels, still the same owner, they should still have a cross access in case one does sell. If they can buy it, they would need to cross access.
Ms. Cooper?
Does it have, I mean, I guess, the design standards that we approved recently, do they, it meets all of those design standards?
They won't be adopted till next Monday. They'll still be, they'll be effective 10 days after then. They'll be effective the 29th of November, if adopted Monday.
The applicant does have the right to talk about architecture and elevations, so that's part of the approval.
I, I mean, if we're up for disguise, if anyone else wants to make a comment, but I would say that there is something lacking in, in the old architecture, it kind of is drab, so to match the old architecture, I mean, I understand that they want to have two equally looking buildings, but equally drab is not okay.
I would suggest that before we get into a detailed conversation about architecture, we provide the applicant opportunity to present the building.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlyle at this point? If not, I guess the applicant is here, may step up to the mic and present your project at this time.
Yes, good evening. Jambala with PEA with the engineering for the project, with me to see if he has Brad Surantelli, who is with NOR, the project architect. As Mr. Carlyle pointed out, it is a 7,200 square foot building, predominantly going to be used for retail. We do meet all the requirements. We have no issue with the cross access, granting the cross access easement agreement, and obviously the foot candles from the facade on the street side need to be adjusted, they are right, and we'll adjust those. Any items that you guys want to talk about is really the architecture, so I'll turn.
Yeah, so, I mean, we don't necessarily want to match what is there, what we want to do is match the character of the area. So the character of the area is like lower scale, pitch roof, brick is prominent in the area, so we're trying to provide that into this design with providing more details in the design to make it a little bit more contemporary of a feel as well. So I went through the list that I was given, and it asked me to go through like the concept and the theme of this entire design, and that's essentially what we came up with. We took your design guidelines as is, and we've kind of done a survey of the area, and we've tried to make this building not necessarily match the existing building on the site, but match the entire area as a whole. So we feel like this matches the residential, it's a very like residential area around with some retail, and I think this fits in with both the residential and the retail that is currently there.
Yeah, it is, both materials.
Yeah, so the materials, we've chosen our brick, two-tone brick for the facade, obviously your standard glazing system, and then a metal roof. So we wanted to get materials that are quality, very quality materials, that are long-lasting and that age well. So we want a type of material that doesn't fade over time or decay, but we want something that will last and be presentable for years to come. So that was the direction of, of the design. Yeah, quality products that just, will just, will weather very well.
Question, which of the bricks, the elevations don't seem to match the brick channels.
Yeah, so, a lot of the time, it's with our printing, but the, Peter would like to see more of what we're showing on the rendering. These are the colors we initially chose, so we're intending to go with more of the lighter colors as shown here, but it's hard to tell, like within, like it will be probably, it will be this brick maybe with a darker grout, and this will be probably more, have a grayer tone than a yellow tone into it though. But we're aiming towards this than this necessarily.
And does that color palette match the existing building?
The existing, I can't, I can't remember, I can't speak to that. I think the lower portion of the, the existing building is a lighter color, as you can see. But around the area, there's a church just down the street, it's a brick building, sloped roof, I think it has a metal roof on it, there's retail across the street and on all corners that are all brick, relatively the same tone in the area, as well as the homes have similar tone in the brick around the area too, we've done a survey of the entire area.
Just another question, do you own the building to the north of that?
No, 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 that is on a different part, where the Manny's Liquors, it's Manny's liquor store.
Right, that's not part of it.
That's not part of this. It could, they have a shared wall, the buildings aren't combined.
Okay. And is that rendering accurate, or is the, is it, the front door going to be on the sidewalk, or is there going to be parking in the front like that?
No, that's, there is no parking on the front.
Mr. Faison, just the, the elevation that's shown with the parking in front is actually this elevation, so there would be no parking in front.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
A question about the property behind this. This entire parcel is owned by the same owner?
It is owned by the same owner, yes.
Are there any plans to develop anything in the back and use this as access point in the future?
That's one of the reasons why we're adding that drive in there, for future development.
So one of the questions it also asks in this rundown is...
And just to, just to point, what Brad's going through is, and your standards that you've adopted, your planning department, probably maybe sent us that list.
So I've tried to...
So we'd have some answers to some of the questions you're going to have, so that's what he's referring to.
Right, so you're talking, asking like what kind of occupancy potentially, so right now, we're in conversation with the local hospital down the street, so we're aggressively trying to get them into this building as well, to take space. So obviously, they have a set of standards as well that they would like to see in new facilities, when looking at potential landing spots.
Just, Ms. Cooper.
Quick comment, looking at the renderings that we see on the very last page, the front of the building, it faces Dequinder, looks rather empty compared to the one that faces the parking lot. Is there any thought of making it look a little more architecturally pleasing than just a rectangle with a triangle on top?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can also maybe move this on to the others.
I'd like to see something a little more dramatic on the side that faces the street. I realize most people will come in that way, but still, like to see that kind of attention to detail in front.
Mr. Prent, just want to be clear, this is the elevation that faces...
Yeah, this is the one, yeah.
Oh, that is, yeah.
This is the one facing the parking lot.
That's the one facing the parking lot. Well, then, then do it on both sides, because the parking lot side looks pretty bland.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely explore that, and put that a part of the cockroach design.
I'm just looking at it, seeing the parking lot was, I see it's in the back.
Yeah, it was, yeah, okay, got it, I understand.
Yeah, now that's...
Mr. Sanzika.
Could you talk a little about the stormwater management of the existing site, and I see what you have for the proposal.
Yeah, the existing site right now, it's just underground stormwater pipes and catch basins. It is restricted, surface retention for, right now. So, for our site, we're doing underground retention, we're going to pre-treat the stormwater. There was a new, enlarged drain put in at Dequinder Road when they redid, when they redid the road this year, we're tying into that new stormwater system. Oh. Could you have Mr. Butler explain what surface retention is, and furthermore, could you have Mr. Butler explain what happens when we get a lot of rain in a very short period of time and you have surface detention?
Yeah, how deep is it?
It appears about, based on our survey, about eight to nine inches deep, where the water will store in the parking lot. It can head up and eventually, it's intended to go out towards the street if it heads up enough, but it's about, it can be into quick duration storms that we've experienced recently. It can be eight to nine inches deep at the catch basins. Our standard allows up to 16 inches of storage. Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I see you have island, landscape island.
Yeah.
Are you considered doing any bio swells or any type of...
Not in this project, no we haven't.
Is the owner here?
Yeah.
If he could answer one quick question, what, do you intend to eventually upgrade the property to the north to reflect this better look?
Well, what we tried to do is, as far as coloring...
Can you step up to the mic, and then sign in also? I think we'll, we'll do that.
If we can just put up the existing building. Okay, the, if you take a look at the top of the building, that's a metal, I guess, overhang that protrudes out of the brick building, and that's one of the reasons for going with the metal roof. So from a coloring standpoint, from the metal and from the brick, we wanted to at least somewhat tie it in, but just the way the buildings are situated, I mean, the designs have changed where like there is no parking in the front here, and it's 10 feet from the sidewalk, whereas on the existing building, you've got a driveway in between, and you've got two sets of parking rows, one on one side and one towards the building. So they're going to be severely offset one building to another, and that's one of the reasons why we went with two buildings rather than combining it to one. And then the other thing is to the access to the property in the back. So, I mean, as far as upgrading the existing building, you know, it's, it's a flat roof, and to upgrade it to a pitched roof, that would be a dramatic change.
Very expensive. I understand, I'm just wondering what your future ideas are, and, you know, and there could be some modest, I'm not saying, you know, get rid of your flat roof, put in a pitched roof, do all that work, but something to make it, the entrances to those, maybe put on some kind of a false...
There could be like a facade added onto the front, you know, the front's, you know, 15 or 20 feet, and just put a small pitched roof that would, you know, equal the, the height of this roof and just kind of pitch it. Yeah, that's, that's a possibility, definitely.
I mean, it just, I think it improves the, the value of the place and the feel, and I'm sure your tenants would appreciate that kind of an upgrade.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I would think, you know, once this construction is done, we can take a look at it, you know, to put some of these pitches in and to put, like you're saying, is a, a front, at least maybe, you know, 15 or 20 feet on top of the building and back, that would probably do the most for, you know, making it more congruent, one building to the other.
Good, thanks, thank you.
Question for the owner, you mentioned that you were trying to get some of the tenants to, some medical tenants from...
Well, we had a meeting with Beaumont, and it's been in the news that they want to develop urgent care centers in southeastern Michigan. From what I heard, that they were saying like 30 different urgent care centers, and basically, some of the reasoning behind that, especially for this site, is being that the hospital is just a mile up the road, it would give some relief to their emergency room.
And are you thinking that might occupy an entire building, or you might have some retail also?
Their ideal square footage for urgent care centers, 4,000 square feet, so they would probably take three or four units.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? If not, we'll bring it back. Any further discussion, comments at this time, or are we ready for a resolution on this at this point? Ms. Cruz.
I'm really missing Mr. Tagle right now, not going to lie, but I look at this building and, you know, my initial reaction to it is it's, it's okay, it, it's okay. And just because the building next door to it has a metal strip in the front of it, and a flat roof, I, I'm not sure it justifies as much the metal roof as it's showing on this building in order to get the two buildings to match. Like, the original building has very little metal on it compared to this. I look at the building and I think, golly, what could you do with that shape to make it look a little nicer in terms of design, and I wonder if a three-dimensional shingle wouldn't help it blend in with the residential area and dress it up a little bit, and I also wonder if some different windows, I mean, I know that we have transparency requirements, but these windows to me look like they could belong on a firehouse, a fire station, and so maybe just a different model of a window might help change the look a little bit. So I don't know, if you change the shingles and you change the windows, does that take the fire station look away?
I guess, maybe that would be a question for the architect in terms of the final product. If the architect would step up to the mic, please, just a quick question.
I mean, you hear the discussion, I mean, I, I understand why you've designed it the way that, that you've designed it in terms of trying to keep with the character of the surrounding buildings and that, that sort of thing, but frankly, the surrounding buildings aren't that pretty.
Right.
And I would doubt that you would enter that into a design contest and put your name on it. So let's think about ways that we could keep what you have, but dress it up. I mean, I'm, I'm not an architect, so I'm just throwing out the window change or 3D shingle, or where you have those pillars, do we want that to be brick, or could we use a more decorative feature to create that pillared look at, at where you have your peaks?
Right, and, I mean, we could also change the color of the, the pillars to kind of make them more pronounced, as you said. The metal roof, we can make like a standing seam or something as well to give more depth to it, more shadow lines to it as well, if we were to stick in a metal roof, but a shingle, a, the, I worry about like a different type of, like a, like you said, a, how did you say that?
A three-dimensional shingle?
Yeah, which, I mean, it gets somewhat costly to go into that direction, but, I mean, we can definitely explore that more with cost on the owner as well to get to that point. As for the windows, I just worry about the transparency guidelines that you guys have set forward, because it is a pretty expansive windows, and to do like a punched window is just hard to attain, like this entire area is a punched window.
I don't know what a punched window is. What's a punched window?
A punched window is more of like a, like this is like a store, a standard storefront window that you would have in any retail situation, so this is a retail building, and we can, you could, we could provide more different molyne lines or...
You need to do something, I, I mean, honestly, it looks like a fire station. And, and all those windows look like they could just roll up and the fire trucks could roll on out.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm, I'm just trying to kind of give justification for the storefront.
Again, I, I understand the justification, but, but I, I'm just saying that, that whole area is not attractive, and so to continue to copy not attractive does not really achieve what we as a planning commission is trying to achieve, is we want to better the city of Troy. We want to better the commercial real estate.
I understand what you're saying. I don't think we tried to copy, I think we just tried to fit the scale and tried to fit it to the character, which is very residential, but...
One thing I noticed is that...
We could take note of all this.
The 3D rendering actually shows the window frames more of a lighter color?
Yes.
And the 2D rendering actually shows it more of a, like a charcoal gray black color?
The reason for that is this is like, you're seeing like the lines.
Okay.
So the lines are a thick line, and they're giving it more of a, a dark color, red. In reality, they're going to be, like I said, like any storefront for any retail business has like a, like a Conier aluminum framed window, which won't have that dark appearance of, it will blend much more into the glass than, than appears on here, it would be, it would fade much more into the, into the glass, for sure.
So it would be more of that lighter color that... So it would be more of that lighter color that would just be more of that aluminum look.
That's right, yeah. Much more like this.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the church that's just south of this is a little darker.
Yes, it is. It's more of a red brick. I was, it's more like into this line.
Mm-hmm.
With the hospital that this is, hopefully, you're going to get tenants for, it's a lighter color. Here you go.
So the brick was more of a choice of the area, so we didn't necessarily pick on one color of brick. We just wanted to add that flavor into the area like we saw the rest of the neighborhood.
I think as we look at this elevation, what we're really used to seeing, what we've been used to seeing for the past couple of years is the retail that's gone up on Big Beaver. Sorry, those elevations, you know, just a diversity in the materials and some of the more modern-looking structures. And this is quite a contrast to what we're used to seeing. So now, you know, we're trying to look at this and kind of justify approving this, maybe because it's on the other side of Troy, it's on the border with Sterling Heights and not a Big Beaver. But again, you know, you're trying, you're trying to achieve a different goal here to blend in with the surrounding neighborhoods. And in our mind, we have a different retail look that we've seen, and that really is, it pops out and has that-
Very contemporary.
A very contemporary look that we've seen quite often. Yes?
I was going to say, I don't think it fits in with the surroundings, because there's really no one way to fit in with that, the original building, the new building, and then the church. There's a lot of lack of continuity.
I'm sorry, I'm just saying, like, retail, like, the residential area, like pitched roofs, single-story, like, we're trying to fit the scale. And when I say character, I mean pitched roofs and-
But I don't think any of the pitched roofs have aluminum, I don't know, I'm just, the houses don't have aluminum roofs.
Yeah, that gives a commercial look.
Right, yeah, the houses have the 3D shingles.
Can we see on an area of what is south of this? Like, where it is, south of it, like, in terms of the structure or the site? Okay, so let's see, the church is south of that. We've got residential on the east side, we have the bank, the bank on the east side, and then 7-Eleven on that side on that corner. So it's kind of mixed.
It's a mixed bag, for sure.
Actually, directly south is the parking lot, and then it's the church.
Yes. Mr. Tom.
So, last month, I was in Colorado for a few days. I noticed a lot of metal roofs, a lot of metal roofs, especially residential. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but metal roofs, perhaps, a little bit more expensive to install versus asphalt, but the lifetime of a metal roof is more than the asphalt shingle?
Yes.
Okay. Is that one of the reasons for consideration of a metal roof, is lower maintenance over time?
Yes, yes.
Could you just bring up a picture of the old, the existing building to the north for a second?
Got me jumping around.
Oh, well, you know.
Heard of my keep?
Yep.
Oops, wrong one.
What I'm looking at is the, what I'm focusing on is the window areas. They look like they're just solid glass without a lot of molyne. That's a typical 1950s, 60s, you name the decade, that's the look of a retail, just big glass, not a lot of, this has more of a, oh, sectioned-off look, which is, you know, just a different look. I don't see a, you know, I know you referred to it as a possible fire station, because some fire stations have that look, I agree. But, you know, it's a design element, it's a design choice to have a grid pattern as opposed to a solid sheet of glass, so-
I don't mind the grid pattern as opposed to a solid sheet of glass. I'm just thinking that different-looking windows could change the look a little bit. And I don't know what the rules are about putting signs in the glass. You know what I mean? Like, I'm trying to envision what this strip center would look like if all of the people that were tenants changed their signs every week with neon colors and the paint for stuff that's on sale, or whatever it is that they're trying to promote. Do you know what I'm talking about? Yeah, like a 7-Eleven or like at a party store. I mean, you get the big paper signs with a, whatever beer is on sale that week, or milk is $3.29 a gallon.
Well, this would kind of, the grid would kind of discourage that kind of signage, because it would break it all up. Whereas a big sheet of glass, you could put in a-
Oh, I don't want big sheets of glass. No, no, I don't want big sheets of glass. I don't, I was just thinking that, I don't know, just something that didn't look like a piece of graph paper. Just, I mean, I'm not the architect, I don't know, but just something that maybe didn't look like a sheet of graph paper.
The existing building, if I could say, it does have darker frames for the windows, and they are in sections of, I believe, like, three feet in width. So, I mean, as far as the aluminum look of the proposed building, I mean, that could be like a dark brown painted aluminum or something along those lines, you can get them pretty much in any color you want.
Mr. Sana.
So, it's interesting, we're talking about glass, because, and Big Beaver, when Ben and I typically deal with applicants for projects like this on Big Beaver, we have to pull teeth to get them to meet the transparency requirements. And just to explain what those are, so, in form-based districts like Big Beaver and node like this one, for the facade facing the street, it's 50% transparency, which means windows and doors that you can see enough. The way you measure that is, if you recall, it's between two and eight feet, and you take a swath across that facade, and 50% of that swath has to be glass. This significantly exceeds that, significantly. So usually, we have to find, just to get to 50%, this is way over, and they actually, this is, on the parking lot side, it's 30, this is pretty close, but, and it's also 30 on these sides. So what strikes me with this application is we're greatly exceeding 50, which makes me happy, design aside, I'm just talking about transparency. But to answer your question about signage, so, our, and I don't want to get into a detailed conversation about the sign ordinance, but I'm just explaining the way that we regulate signs in the city. If you take a sign and you place it inside, attached to the inside of the window, we don't regulate it, except in form-based districts, we have a requirement in the zoning ordinance for the 50% transparency. So if a retail user wants to plaster these with signs, they can't in this district. This is, if it's a different zoning district that doesn't have the transparency requirements, they can't. Here, they can. This is, glass is going to be glass. They can't drop below the 50%.
But so they can cover half the glass with signs, because-
Wow, important. It gets into, ideally, there's none, and this is an approved site plan, this is the transparency they're proposing, so if we drove by and we saw one of these pasted with signs, we'd probably knock on the door and say, you can't, you got to take these down for these reasons, have to communicate with them.
Well, I mean, you've clearly done what you were asked to do, and you've clearly stayed within the guidelines of the ordinance. I mean, so I'm not trying to like beat you up. You've done your job, clearly. But I just thought, well, I'd throw it out there and see if I could get traction.
I'm curious what the rest of the planning commission members, what the consensus is of, are we going to ask the applicant to go back and redesign this and upgrade the architecture, or are there minor things that he could do that administratively that he could possibly submit to get this thing going? I'd like to see it move ahead, quite honestly. My opinion is, I think the design is a fair design, it's not spectacular. Obviously, we're, like you say, looking at the Big Beaver as a comparison, and this is definitely-
This is a Big Beaver.
No, and it's more residential.
Right.
You know, you could probably work with Brent and, who'd been, maybe a little bit more as far as those columns, maybe utilize the brick color that's around the top to put in the columns or something, but those are minor. I think the design is sufficient for this location. I'm ready to go ahead with resolution.
Any other comments about the architecture? The maximum height of this building is, I thought I saw on the 30, 30 feet, or is that, what is that maximum height? Just trying to get a-
3 foot 4.
30 foot 4, okay. So it's really in line with the homes across the street? I mean, those homes are probably between 30 and 35 feet in height. So this building is not even taller than most of the, most of those colonials that are across Dequender. It's not as tall as the church, right? So the church is all taller.
I think this gets back to, I don't know if as you currently mentioned it, but, you know, when we talk about Big Beaver, we want the height, and we typically, typically we're dealing with flat roofs.
Right.
So they're up to 24, 26 feet, one story, but they're flat roofs. What's different with this one, and I had the same issue in my mind when I first saw this, was, was thinking of this in the Big Beaver context, where, oh, this is 30 foot 4, this is taller than the one-story retail we see on Big Beaver, but because it's a pitched roof, it doesn't have the appearance of being taller. That flat roof gives more of the wow factor, because it's, it's a different appearance.
Any other thoughts?
A question. I know on Big Beaver, we had talked about, this goes back some time ago, about how the front entrance needed to be on the street, on Big Beaver, but in practicality, people parked in the back and entered in the back, and then the front entrance had things like a laundry there or other things that weren't consistent with the front entrance. Have we built in any kind of protection against that, or is that a risk that we have?
There's protection, there's, besides the transparency, there's a requirement that activity be visible through the windows. It's really hard to mandate, use the word protect, I'm trying to think of a word that, protect's a pretty good word. So, think of the new development that's going on on Big Beaver, the corner of Big Beaver in Rochester, was those three new buildings, and I forget how many tenants are in there, over a dozen. What typically happens is, so we have pre-application meeting with the project architect and the owner, and we talk about the design of the building, we go over transparency, we go over activity, it's all good. They design the building, when it's approved, that project architect is gone. He's built the building, he's delivered what he had to deliver, gone. So now, the individual tenants bring in their own architects, usually from out of state. When I talk to them, most of them have never been to Troy, let alone been to Big Beaver and seen what we're trying to accomplish on Big Beaver. So on a case-by-case basis, inevitably, the first rendition I see with a buildout has a storage room and the bathroom, or a break room on Big Beaver, and the main entrance and the dining area or whatever on the parking lot side. So I have to have dialogue and explain, go through the whole rigmarole, much like I'm doing now, explain what we're trying to accomplish on Big Beaver, and get them to flick the switch. Now, we, there was one tenant who's used a local architect, who was very familiar with Big Beaver, who called me before putting pen to paper and said, what are you looking for? And I explained it. So the very first rendition I got was perfect. And I actually called him up to thank him for getting his stuff together and doing that. But for most of them, it was a bit of, I don't want to say fight, but certainly a lot of pushback. And for some of them, we had to really kind of walk them through it and get pen and paper out and suggest ways to meet the requirements.
Just to follow up on that, the building department requires Director Sullivan to sign off on interior floor buildouts to make sure it still meets the form-based requirements for transparency.
Okay.
So there's a check and balance.
Protection's built in, okay, thank you.
Every potential tenant is different.
Right.
Like bund cakes is different than the ice cream place, which is different than First Watch, which is different than the pizza, like the rim plate, they're all different, they've got their own brands, their own, trying to achieve different things. So every one of them takes a flexible approach, and at the end of the day, hopefully, it's going to turn out the way we hope it turns out, but it's case by case.
Okay, and it come through you.
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are we ready for a resolution?
I am, I just had one quick question, mainly to our staff people. We talked about the parking lot side looking a little more like the front, the Dequender side. Can, do we, can we mandate that in the resolution, or is that just that the owner knows what our feelings are, and then just leave it up to you to work with them on that? Do I have to put that wording in the resolution, or do we just leave it out and?
Well, I'm not an architect, so I don't know exactly what your vision is for the back.
The back would look similar to the front.
I think, I think I heard what you said, I think the applicant heard what you said, I think they agreed to it, so if they're willing to agree to it, I think you should put the condition of approval.
Like, there's two peaks in the front, gables, whatever you want to call them, we can put like, in the back, two gables-
To match it, connect it.
Yeah. Like, for the, in the front, in the front elevation, the gable is just over, you know, it looks like the second tenant from the left and the second tenant from the right. On the back elevation, it would probably be the second and third tenants, you know, from the left, and then the second and third tenant from the right. So then, you know, it would be symmetrical.
Yep, absolutely, totally understand. Okay, I'm ready. Okay.
I'm okay, I'll, they met there, but it goes back to the issue I had, I think, when we discussed the design standards, that we still don't have an ordinance that prevents just lack of continuity or prevents ugly. I just, I, that, it's going to be so disjointed in that, the three consecutive buildings there, I just, I don't know.
We're, can I-
Mr. Sana.
We're in an awkward place, because we've got 50 years of building with the parking in front and the building behind it. I don't know what year, you know what year this is?
I think it was in the late 70s.
Okay, so built late 70s, so the form's flipped. So the goal, the goal or the intent of these provisions is, over time, this building's going to live its useful life, and they're going to rebuild, and it's going to be built closer to the road, and it's going to be disjointed for a while.
And when I'm gone, you can all do new ordinances. Or you can come sit in the audience.
Yeah.
There you go. And you can speak to items either on or not on the agenda. Maybe I'll watch you on TV and-
No, we expect you here. We expect you here in the audience.
Yeah.
Listen to Tom's wants and needs.
I'm ready, are you, are we ready?
Go ahead, Ms. Cruz. Okay. Resolve that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed Dequender retail located south of East Square Lake Road, west of Dequnder, P-I-N 88-20-12-200-027. Section 12 within the N-N neighborhood node, N district, be granted, subject to the applicant, subject to the following. Either combine parcels or provide a cross-access easement, or use foot candle measurement along Dequnder, and have the, have both the front and back sides of the building look similar to the side on Dequnder. At least Dequnder, I should say.
I support. Moved by Mr. Crant and supported by Mr. Sanzika. Roll call, Ms. Sana, you can please.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Apedion?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number six on the agenda, public comment for items on the current agenda. Everyone in the audience who should speak to- If you want to be in the audience, would you speak to an item on the agenda? No? And we will move on to item number seven, planning commission comments. We will start with Mr. Faison.
No comment today.
Ms. Koopa.
Wow, I guess. This is it. It's my last planning commission.
This is your last meeting?
This is my last meeting.
No, we got, just, I got December, you got, you can't. Your term doesn't start till January.
I'm out of the country. I'm visiting my parents.
Oh, I see.
I'm just getting my resignation tomorrow. Effective immediately?
Well, yeah. I'll be Vegas.
So it's been a pleasure being on planning commission. I didn't know what I was getting into, but I've made a lot of good friends here and have enjoyed our discussions around buildings. Still think we need an ordinance on ugly, so good luck with that. And hopefully they'll have a committee or a caucus that talks about placemaking because I'm still hung up on how do we create a master plan for Michigan? And how do we make sure that we as a state are thriving and vibrant, not just because it's, and then I think the last planning conference was very helpful because of that whole idea of localism amidst populism and just that idea of Congressman Kildee said about people move to communities. And it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with all of you as we try to create more sustainable community here at Troy. Thank you.
Now, I just want to say thank you for being here with us and thank you for taking the training and taking this job very seriously and bringing some great comments to the table. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Sanzika. Congratulations for all your hard work. It was an uphill battle and I was quite surprised when you announced last Christmas that you were going to Romney. It was amazing, you did a lot of work and you deserve, you're deserving of your position.
Thank you.
Ms. Fries. Ms. Arndt. Ms. Hudson.
Edma, you ran a great campaign and I'm looking forward to some good things coming from you up there.
Thank you.
And I would echo what Mr. Hudson said and I'll be holding you accountable. I don't live in Troy, but I'll be holding you accountable too. It's okay, thank you.
Congratulations, first off. I'm really happy for you and also I can tell you from, from our position, I think what we appreciate the most is how much you're willing to learn and how you took this very seriously and you really, I really appreciate all the comments and insight you brought. So best luck in that too.
Pleasure getting to know you. I know you're not going anywhere, so I look forward to following you as you move on to bigger, better things. I think you're going to do great work in that sentence. I'm really excited for you. Related to appointments, Barb Fowler was nominated by the mayor Monday night and her appointment will be considered next Monday, on the 19th of November. So she would replace Mr. Edmonds. So we would, we would then have two positions. Obviously, Pauma's one and Mr. Sanzika's indicated that he's moving on, also moving on to bigger, better things.
When is your last meeting?
December, first year. This year.
Okay.
I'm just trying to remember how many terms I've been here because I remember when Mark Miller was attending these meetings and you've been the director for 10 years now, as I understand.
Close.
Yeah. Time goes by so quickly.
One thing I forgot to mention, I am the planning commission representative to the ZVA. So does that mean we don't have someone for next week's meeting and the December, is there a December ZVA meeting?
They could always have an alternate come in. They do have alternates. It doesn't have to be for the planning commission, as I understand.
Well, I mean, somebody's have to fill the role.
You're not going to be there.
And I recommend, I want to some of the newer members to my right.
Right, left. Yeah, so Pauma, thank you for all your contributions here to the planning commission. Thank you for everything that you've contributed and added to this body and congratulations. And you're probably the one that knows all the hard work you put into this and your win is well deserved and good luck in moving forward. And you will be submitting all sorts of grants for Troy.
That's true. I forgot about that part. Budget.
There's always a need for more funding somewhere, so thanks, Pauma. Congratulations.
So Pauma, I went first, right? So I didn't, I didn't get a chance to thank you for your service and tell you how much I admire the commitment you showed. I'm talking about running your race, you know, leaving your job, going all in and winning. So congratulations for that.
Thank you. I also forgot to mention that at the last Troy Historical Society Board meeting, I knew that either way I would have more time on my hands because I knew I had to step down from planning. I accepted the responsibility of becoming the president of the Board of the Troy Historic Society. So you'll still see me around. Might be hitting you up for some Historic Society things. And talk about place, that's a great way to create place, is to, to make that a destination for weddings. If we have the Niles Barnard House, you know, what we promised we would do when it was donated to us, to refurbish it and so make it a public building. We would be the only museum in the state of Michigan that has three buildings that are locally sourced from the early 1800s. So we have a jewel and we have, we have, it would be a very key piece of placemaking for the city.
Okay. If there are no other comments, then thank you and we are adjourned for tonight.